All right, well, good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power. It's June 23rd, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's 5:00 PM or just a little bit after 5:00 PM, and we will do a roll call.
City of San Diego representative.
La Cava here.
County of San Diego representative. Imperial Beach representative. Mesa representative.
Bill Babers here online.
National City representative. Chula Vista representative.
Councilmember John McCann here for the city of Chula Vista.
Encinitas representative.
Here.
We have a big one.
All right, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You know, I always do the roll call first. All right, I guess it's just easy to do it that way. All right, so we have the agenda before us. Any changes to post the agenda? I'll move to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the Board of Directors on items that are not on our agenda?
We do have one member raising their hand at this time, Joyce Lane.
Let's recognize Joyce. And Joyce has three minutes.
Joyce, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Joyce Lane with San Diego 350. I'm also a resident of the city of San Diego. I'm calling to express concern over the unconfirmed media reports of COO Cody Hoven's departure. If these reports are true, we are concerned about where San Diego Community Power is heading. There have been many negative news stories about CCE programs, including the collapse of Western Community Energy in Riverside and charges of chaos and corruption at Orange County Power Authority. We need stable and trusted leadership, and the departure of Ms. Hoven, a well-respected and trusted leader in this community, calls into question S- San Diego Community Power's standing and direction as it competes for customers with SDG&E this summer. Our communities fought for years to bring community choice energy to San Diego. This agency cannot fail or afford to lose any more of its talented team. We need an explanation, hope this is not a sign of further destabilization, and urge the board to carefully pay attention to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. And as the chairman of the Board of Directors, I assure you that the organization is absolutely very strong and that we have an amazing and talented team here that's pulling everything together and that we're reaching our goals and exceeding our goals. So thank you so much for your public comment. Any other members of the public wishing to?
We did have someone, I look at it was Dave Peterson that had submitted slides, and he is on here. He just hasn't raised his hand. Well, we have John Knox who... John, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to thank all of you for serving our community as part of San Diego Community Power. I'm a longtime resident educator and solar homeowner in Chula Vista, and I have long looked forward to the day when my relationship would no longer be with SDG&E but with a CCA such as San Diego Community Power. So thank you. I wanted to ask about this. My... I just met my true-up date early in early June as a solar homeowner. And my understanding was that going forward, after I had my true-up, instead of getting my bill and getting communications from SDG&E, I would start to receive that information from San Diego Community Power. I haven't noticed any change. In fact, just this week, I got another... I got a... SDG&E will give you sort of a progress report on how you're doing during the month, and I just got one from them. So I'm just wondering whether I may have missed something? Is it something that hasn't quite gotten off the ground, and I need to be a little more patient? Or can you help me understand?
Sure. So you should be... So since June was your true-up period, it's going to be next month that you would receive all the information from San Diego Community Power, I believe.
We'll follow up.
All right. Do we want to give him somebody's email address so that he can email us or call us? Or is there a number that he can call or email address that he can email? All right. You can call the main line. You know what? I'll give you my email address. You can always email me, and I'll forward your email on. It's jmosca, M-O-S-C-A, at encinitasca.gov.
Okay, thank you. That'll be very helpful.
I'll email you. I'll follow your information on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we did have Dave Peterson who had submitted the four slides, so...
Was this on the agenda? Was this on energy procurement? What was this? It was just general comment. All right, perfect. Oh, awesome.
Dave Peterson, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Peterson, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All solar array power topology reduce electricity costs. Today's presentation compares two solar array topologies for a hypothetical 90 megawatt, 360 megawatt hour hybrid energy farm in the Imperial Valley. Both solar arrays are rated at 90 megawatts, so both have the same number of solar panels. The only difference is their array topology. It was assumed that the farm would use lithium-ion batteries for energy storage. These batteries, Powerwall, for example, have a typical round trip loss of 10%. This loss means that for the farm batteries to be fully charged to 360 megawatt hours, the array must provide a minimum of 400 megawatt hours data. Topology one is a solar array with horizontal panels. All the panels have single-axis trackers. The Pendus PV TIS tool was used to predict the electricity production of the array. On a very cloudy year, the red bar shows that the daily average, based on monthly totals, can be as low as 308 megawatt hours. When batteries are not fully charged, the farm produces 10% to 23% less electricity. Natural gas power plants are needed to make up for this loss. During the rest of the year, Slide 2 shows the topology one annually over generates 103,000 megawatt hours for electricity that is needed to charge the farm batteries. I'm going to switch to topology 2. Topology 2 uses a combination of two solar array configurations. It always meets the average of 400 megawatt hours. Typically, 408. I'm going to read the final chart next. On very cloudy summer days, no, I'm reading the fourth chart. On very cloudy days during the winter, neither way will be required 400 megawatt hours. The average... Going to Slide 4. Well, let me say that the average car weighs about 2 tons. And chart slide 5 shows that over generated electric adds millions of tons of electricity to the atmosphere. For your reference, a random bird version of the comments was submitted Tuesday along with the slides. I thank the Board of Members for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and thank you for the time that you put in and making this presentation and sending us emails as well. Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back to the Board of Directors. So we have a consent calendar that's before you. Any member of the board want to pull any of the consent calendar items?
No.
All right. Any public comment from the public on the consent calendar?
There are no hand raised at this time, and we did not receive any written comments.
All right. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment on the consent calendar, raise your hand. If not, then I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar, and we'll take all eight items in one motion.
Motion to approve?
All right, I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Director McCann and a second by Director La Cava, and we'll vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Bush, how do you vote? Director La Cava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote? Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, so we'll move to item number nine. Consideration of SDCP mission, vision, core values, and goals for 2023 to 2027. And this is something that we've been working on for some time. This is the third meeting that this board has actually been looking at some strategic planning. And so we have a lot of the stuff together, and our CEO is going to present what we have, the mission, vision, core values, and the goals. So I'll turn it over to Karen.
Thank you. Thank you. Next slide, please. That's it. That's it. Okay. Excellent, sorry. So good evening, and thank you, everyone, for joining us. I'm excited to present today our proposed mission, vision, values, and goals for SDCP. Over the past several weeks, the staff, the CAC, and consultants have assisted the Board of Directors in developing SDCP's mission, vision, value set, and key organizational goals. As background, how did we get here? During the weeks of May 2nd and May 9th, SDCP staff met in small groups to brainstorm our mission, vision, key focus areas, and values. Each group decides a spokesperson. On May 11th, the staff had an all-staff meeting to come together as a team to discuss the results of smaller group meetings, and the spokesperson summarized each team's votes. On Saturday, May 14th, the Board of Directors and chief executive officer met in person. The exec team and staff were encouraged to attend virtually. The Board of Directors created a working SDCP vision statement and a working SDCP mission statement that you'll see soon. They also drafted a set of key focus areas. Then, from May 16th through June 10th, staff developed, from those key focus areas, a set of recommended high-level goals that support the overall key focus areas. On Saturday, June 11th, all the members of the Board of Directors, the members of the Community Advisory Committee, and SDCP staff met in person, some attended virtual, and we created organizational goals that were presented to the board, supported organizational priorities and key focus areas. A draft of our core values document was also created. On June 16th, all staff met in person, as well as some virtual, to have a core values discussion to create a slightly revised and succinct list of core values based on the original draft. So I'm now going to walk you through those final drafts, these documents, and leave it open for final discussion as needed. Next slide. Our proposed mission statement. San Diego Community Power is a community-owned organization that provides affordable, clean energy and invests in the community to create an equitable and sustainable future for the San Diego region. Next slide. Our vision statement. We are a global leader inspiring innovative solutions to climate change by powering our communities with 100% clean, affordable energy while also prioritizing equity, sustainability, and high-quality jobs. Proposed core values. We call these the gist of SDCP. Our first one, justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Jedi. Our second one, impact. Our third, integrity. Our fourth, innovation. Our fifth, servant leadership. And our sixth is togetherness. Excellent. So some of the statements that arose came to bring about these six core values. Around our Jedi, we prioritize inclusivity. We are intentional about inclusion and collaboration. We believe we are stronger together, and that it is important to have a team that represents our diverse communities. As relates to impact, we will be 100% renewable. We will consider environmental impact in all of our decisions. We will reduce GHDs while also prioritizing community needs. Integrity. We value and encourage mutual transparency and respect. We report to the people we serve. We respect each other and our communities. Innovation. We are proactive with our approach to innovation. We ask not why... We say not why it can't be done, but how can we do it? We recognize we are doing something that has not been done before, and we believe our organization to be fueled on innovation and sustainable solutions. Number five, servant leadership. We will demonstrate our global leadership and sustainability by pursuing an innovative approach. We believe climate change is a generational challenge. We will be intentional in our mission to serve our communities and our member agencies. We are stewards of the environment, our communities, and also each other. We strive for excellence in everything that we do. Next slide, please. Togetherness. We value and respect and empower all people at the table in this clean energy transition. We value our customers. We will be approachable, transparent, and responsive. We value inclusivity, championing environmental justice, and we are together in our mission to serve our communities. Those were our core values and mission statements that brought about those core values. Next, we'd like to talk about our focus areas and key organizational goals. Next slide. The first one is financial stability. We will practice fiscal strategies to run out long-term organizational sustainability. Next slide. Adopting financial controls and risk management policies. Attaining an investment-grade credit rating. Adopting our plan to increase reserves to 175 million by 1023 and 360 million by 1025. And we will develop a rate stabilization reserve of 70 million to help mitigate power cost fluctuations. Next slide, please. Our second key focus area is energy portfolio development. Here, our overall goal is to provide sufficient, reasonably priced, clean electricity to our customers. We will manage our portfolio, manage risk, cost, and reliability. We will secure a clean energy portfolio. 50% is what we have today. 75% by '27, 85% by 2030, 100% of 2035. 15% of our energy will come from new distributed infill, storage, and solar plus storage resources within our member agencies by 2035. In that same timeframe, we will procure 600 megawatts of new local wholesale energy and/or battery storage projects that are utility scale based within San Diego or Imperial counties. We will support the development of innovative energy resources and will create high-quality jobs. Next slide, please. Third, key focus area is around community program delivery. Here, we will implement projects and programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, align our energy supply, demand, and provide benefits to community stakeholder groups. Excellent. We will implement the recommendations of our community power, and we will include continuous and community engagement and assessment of those benefits. We will invest in programs that target underserved communities and that are distributed throughout our member agencies. Invest in programs that promote residential and commercial solar, infill solar, and/or distributed battery storage. We will develop local support for deep decarbonization. Next slide, please. Programs goals continue. We will develop workforce opportunities in the local clean energy sector. We will support local and state initiatives to advance decarbonization in alignment with member agency climate action plans. We will provide all customers with education how they can also contribute to the clean energy transition. We will maintain appropriate and sufficient data resources to support smart program design and evaluation. Next slide. Our fourth area is in building a trusted brand. We want to do this to develop, help drive participation in programs, and support customer service and retention. Next slide, please. We want to identify and address gaps between perception and our desired brand identity. We translate policy issues into consumer-friendly information. Become known as leaders in the CCA industry. Foster relationships with city planning offices, CBOs, NGOs, and tradeists. Develop relationships with industry media and influencers. Engage the community participation in many of their local events. Next, impact area is in the legislative and regulatory space. We want to advocate the proactive and public policy that advance our organizational priorities. We proactively educate and engage policymakers, including advocacy around our priorities. Sponsor and support legislation and regulation that is consistent with our mission, vision, values, and goals. We'll develop an annual legislative plan to advance and support our objectives. We'll meet more proactively, educate key decision-makers in Sacramento, CEC, CPUC commissioners, and coordinate with member agency government affairs teams to align on legislative positions. We'll continue to be an active participant in CalCCA to develop those partnerships and coalitions that we need to advance our policies. Our next key organizational focus area is around customer service. We want to ensure high customer retention and satisfaction. Next. Ensure customer satisfaction with key relationships. We continually strive to offer competitive rates. We maintain and grow high levels of customer satisfaction. We will keep 10% of our local load at power 100 service level by 2027. We will build a robust data ecosystem for effective procurement, design, management, and evaluation. Our last focus area, organizational development and excellence. We'll ensure excellence by adopting sustainable business practices, fostering a workplace culture of innovation, adversity, transparency, and integrity. To do this, we will create a culture of inclusion, mutual respect, fast innovation, collaboration. Develop an annual staffing plan to identify and address our resource needs and gaps. Provide training and professional development opportunities for our staff to build new skills and abilities. We'll foster a culture of innovation and yield solutions that accelerate our mission. We'll design and implement internal programs to attract workforce from our member cities and create opportunities for candidates new to the CCAs. We will build institutional capacity in the CAC to support the mission and goals of SDCP.
All right. I'm proud of what we've done so far. You know, we've been talking about putting a strategic plan together, and with the help of staff and all the board members, we've certainly put together an ambitious plan here. And so very proud of what we have and that Karen just outlined. This is really going to take us from the point where we're at now with having launched our last of the original members and looking forward to launch into 2023. But then beyond that, you know, how are we going to basically reach the goals that we have and add value to this space? So you have the plan, the proposed plan before you. Do you have any questions or thoughts or ideas or comments on the plan? Yes?
Yeah. First of all, I just really want to thank Karen and the team. You all have done an amazing job, really. And I think you... This is just... I think this is great. Like, I think we clearly have to, you know, get to a point where we are a financially stable and viable energy company, but we need to do it in a way that's different, that centers community, that really centers delivering for community because we are a community power company. And I think that's reflective here, and most importantly to me, is really centering our climate goals and our sustainability goals at the center of everything we do. And, you know, I, of course, really appreciate those concrete measurable energy procurement goals around infill solar and around 100% renewable as to like really key things that I think differentiate us and set us apart. I really appreciate the thoughtful way in which your program designs are meant to complement those energy procurement goals as well as complement the customer service side. I really appreciate the way that the programs are meant to further our climate goals as well as furthering our customer service and centering our customer service needs. So those are the things that really struck me in looking at this, those pieces. I think it's going to be a big lift, but I think you all are the brave folks for the task. So thank you very much for all that you do and do every single day. And, you know, just really excited that we can move forward with something that, you know, I can be proud of when I talk to the voters in my district.
Great. As you say, even the 15% in terms of infill solar, I mean, in that balance, if we can... And I know the county has identified potential for even greater penetration in that area. I mean, if we can, as the, you know, as we're reaching for this goal, if it's possible to reach further and get to some of the numbers the county had kind of disclosed, 35%, you know, where this is absolutely a value of ours, and it's something that we want to do, so...
I'll certainly echo the comments of Supervisor Lawson Reamer on that amazing work. I really appreciate how collaborative and inclusive the conversations were over those two days. It's really pretty amazing. I appreciate the staff to kind of clean up all the work that we did. Put it nice, fix the grammar, and polish it all up. I just had one question. I think there was one bullet point that you included that didn't show up in the agenda, and that is under the energy portfolio. I think you mentioned 600 megawatts of local utility scale.
Yes.
So that was terrific. I remember us talking about that. So that's terrific. And if it is the pleasure of the chair, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Absolutely.
Happy speaking.
All right. So we have a motion by Director La Cava and a second by Director Lawson Reamer. Do we have any other comments by board members? Mr. Baber?
Nope.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We received no written comments, and we do have one hand raised. At any price, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Greetings. Thank you. Um, I would just like to make a request that this is like a legal binding document that the word "underserved communities" be removed and be replaced with "communities of concern", and that's it. We've worked real hard to re-identify the community in which I live as a community of concern, and this kind of takes it back a step. So if that could be removed, I would be extremely happy. Thank you.
Which number? Which item?
It was on the PowerPoint presentation that...
It's 3B, if you have the outline.
Invest in programs that target underserved communities and then parent up communities of concern?
Oh, okay. Just delete the under...
So you just want to delete underserved and just say, "Invest in programs that target communities in concern"?
Yes.
All right. And we still also have to... We still have to, as an organization, I have to work with our member agencies to understand what definitions they have for community concern or actually start the work of defining ourselves. I know San Diego has done some work on this. I'm not sure if the county or other member agencies have, but we need to do that.
I'll comment on that. Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We at the county, as well as at the city, have kind of both have gone through like really robust consultative processes, and you could draw on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And then one other point, too, that I want to put on the table, that in terms of like local, we say local as Imperial, it's San Diego. I think that we're finding some projects coming out of Riverside, and Riverside seems to be local as well. You know, so I think that local should be Riverside and San Diego and Imperial.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, but make her the motion.
No, I don't know that we define local in the bullet point, but yes.
Yeah, we have Imperial. I think it may be just in the presentation, I saw it. I don't know. I didn't see it elsewhere, but we do have our director of procurement over here. So he's a... Or what's the title now? Chief Procurement?
Managing Director.
All right, noted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I... We do have a couple of projects coming out of Riverside, and I mean, just it makes so much sense that that would be local. All right. All right. And then, Megan, any public comments? Did you say there's no public comment? All right.
Yeah, there's no public comment.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and it's seconded. Let's vote. Can we just confirm the amendments that were discussed or included from the secret?
Right.
Yep. Well, there's only one form on them because the others only...
Do we want to read back?
Presentation that we're approving.
Can I ask a clarification?
Sure.
So the friendly amendment, it was... So the friendly amendment, it was for defining local and then are we changing the wording for underserved?
Communities of concern.
To communities of concern.
We're deleting. They were both there. We're just deleting one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's my motion.
All right. So we have an understanding of that motion. Let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote? Director Bush, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director Dina, how do you vote? Director Lukava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right. And then very nicely, we're going to move into our the approval of fiscal year 2023 operating budget and that is our CFO, Eric Washington.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Directors. I am presenting for approval, the budget for fiscal year 2023. This slide shows the schedule. This will be familiar to most of you as well as perhaps some of the public audience. We started in February with developing our overarching operating revenues and operating expenses to develop our financial plan to achieve a credit rating in the timeframe determined. We then went into March with further development of the budget, but we took input from the staff to base them on, to set the baseline of our budget. Then we presented, we previewed the budget actually to the board at the May board meeting and then made final adjustments after we received the final projections for our revenue and energy costs. And now we previewed that with Finance and Risk Management Committee, who advanced it to the board for final approval that we're presenting this evening, ultimately ratify the budget and implement the budget January 1st. Next slide please. So just to highlight items that we focused on in the fiscal year 2023 budget, many of which align directly with some of our goals and align with our mission and vision statements just adopted by our board. We're giving focus to community programs for this fiscal year and we budgeted for that to launch some initial pilot programs as we continue to build out our programs team to support the growth in our program efforts and roll out those pilot programs. We are also anticipating the enrollment of FACE 4 to include the ramping on or the enrollment of the city of National City as well as the County of San Diego during the first half of calendar year 2023. We'll continue our outreach efforts to inform, to make sure that our communities and our customers are informed about San Diego Community Power through sponsorships, community events, as well as advertising. We continue to to give attention and focus on the cost of energy, which we've seen some historic levels in terms of energy costs, but through our concerted and intentional efforts in terms of hedging, where we've been able to mitigate some of the high cost of energy that we're seeing and that's also built into our budget. Next slide. So in summary, this is, we are projecting 709 million in net revenue for fiscal year 2023 with total expenses of 695.9 million that will land us at a net position for fiscal year 2023 at 13 million. Adding adding that to what we budgeted for fiscal year 2022, we'll have a cumulative net position or our reserve that would support about 36 days of cash on hand to cover 36 days of expenses. Again, in this slide, the graphic again supports the notion that energy cost is the highest expense category in our budget at 93%. Next slide. So as I'd mentioned previously, we previewed our, an initial draft of our budget during the May board meeting. This slide is essentially a depiction of the changes between what we presented in May and what we're coming back to the board with now for final approval at the June meeting. Just overall, in summary, the changes contributed about $4 million to our budget, given some of the changes to the reduction in errors removed in terms of energy costs, which supported additional revenue, but was pretty much offset by the rising cost of energy for the unhedged portion of our portfolio since May. We had budgeted for retirement of some debt that was scheduled for the budget in May, but we have actual resources that are restricted cash that'll repay those that that a portion of the debt, the principal portion of the debt. So then that does not actually come out of our budget. So those are the three main drivers to a 3.9 million improvement to the budget for fiscal year 2023. Next slide.
Can you go back?
Sure.
Apologies. Can you explain the the era, the reduction removed to higher energy cost? What what was the trigger? What was the trigger point that allowed us to do that?
So, so Tim or Byron maybe can help me kind of explain this, but essentially the era was a portion that was set aside, I believe, to support the cost of energy, but with the rising cost of energy that was removed and that actually contributed back to the revenue.
Was there a a trigger like number?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the trigger number was.
Cost going up.
Yeah. Yeah, but it was definitely tied to the rise of cost.
Understood. I just want to know what what if it was a gradual slope or there was a step function in terms of triggering that reduction.
Great question. Thank you. This slide, again, just reiterates our reserve policy. Our reserve policy supports us allocating up to 15% of our gross revenue toward building our reserves up to 90 days cash on hand. So with the budget, we've budgeted to achieve about 49.1 million in reserves, which is the cumulative of what we budgeted for fiscal 2022 and fiscal year 2023, again, supporting 36 days cash on hand, where the target is actually 90 days cash on hand. So this slide really shows how we're tracking to reach, to reach that that first milestone of 90 days cash on hand. Next slide please. This slide, again, just rolls it out further in in terms of laying out where we'll hit those thresholds based on the current projections that was updated for the month of June. So this shows how we're tracking toward that and based on this projection where we'll land in terms of meeting those those benchmarks and those thresholds. Next slide please. In terms of reserves, this is a comparative analysis of where we where we are tracking to in terms of achieving our 90 days cash on hand and how we compare to existing CCAs that are that are longer in terms of existence compared to us and where they are in terms of days cash on hand and then the credit rates that they've been able to achieve. So as we continue to move forward in our in our projections and move forward in our growth trajectory, we're shooting to get to a point where we could actually obtain a credit rating. And some of the benefits of doing that would allow us to obtain better terms from our suppliers as well as credit terms with lower, more favorable interest rates.
Do you know what Clean Power Energy is? Clean Power Alliance.
Clean Power.
Los Angeles.
That's in Los Angeles, Clean Power Alliance.
Oh, he's asking if he.
Do you know what?
Oh, with them.
Other ones that you're, that they're quite mature. And so just wondering where Clean Power, Clean Power Alliance.
No, we can certainly follow up on that. We did not compare them. We were comparing to rated CCAs, but that that's a good point. We'll certainly follow up on that, on that data.
And I would imagine that that's a goal of theirs as well. And yeah, I just would love to know where they're at.
Yeah, Chair Moscow, Director, to Megamind Finance Manager, they don't currently have a credit rating. And so I I know they have, we could pull up the cash from that, or we could pull up the their operating expense reserve policy, but they don't have a credit rating against. We're just trying to compare it to them.
All right. Yeah. And we we will be able to extrapolate from their financials back into an estimate of where they are in terms of days cash on hand based on their financials. All right. But to Tim's point, they're not credit rated. And we could have, we we will have insight into their reserve policy as well.
As big as they are, they don't, that's not a goal of theirs?
I mean, it could be a goal.
Goal, but but even.
But where they are in terms of what you're heading, is what we don't have visibility.
So that would be nice to know since they, if it is in fact a strategic goal of theirs, then the trajectory that they're heading could maybe similar to ours. So it would be nice to see where they're at.
Thank you. Next slide. So another item that we included or gave it gave attention to in the budget as we continue to grow is where we'll land in terms of personnel growth in this fiscal year. So fiscal year 2023, we're projecting to reach 40 staff members. We're currently at 19. So our budget would support that growth as we continue to grow and to support that top line revenue number, the programs and all of the services that we'll be providing during the fiscal period.
Can we pause this? And Karen, if there's a sort of a better format for you, that's fine. I don't want to like hijack our budget conversation, but I would be, I would love to sort of have a better understanding of some of what you see as the the key roles of some of the new hires and some of these positions. I think some are really obvious, right? Like we have had a lot of conversations around programs, so we're clearly not going to be able to do that with two people, right? So so seven makes sense. But some of them I actually just don't know, right? Like what what the additional work is that we're looking at for, say, for example, external affairs? Or data analytics, those are, I guess, the ones that seem that that I have the least clarity on. But I think it might, it would be helpful for me to have, maybe it's a next feeding kind of presentation about staffing plan.
And how that how that compares to our implementation plan? With that.
Yeah, I I think that's right. It's I agree with just, you know, not just the staffing plan, but like now that we have this overall goals, mission, vision, mission, how the staffing plan is aligned to support implementation of that.
And so and then also as we're kind of looking at the salary survey, you know, have we thought about the market is just quite different than when we basically put our implementation plan together several years ago. So, you know, what are the implications of this today as the market is kind of tightening up and and as we're we're kind of doing the salary survey, what what can we expect that may be different?
What's the timing of that salary survey?
We are in contract right now. So it's about six to eight weeks from the time we sign the contract and then they receive our updated work chart, our updated job descriptions, and six to eight weeks from that period. So we're probably three to four days out, maybe next week sometime, the contract is signed and the material provided to them.
It'd be very helpful to ensure that when they do that, that they're not just looking at a snapshot because we know we're in a really volatile economic market right now. So I think it would be helpful if they both told us where they think they are right now, but also where they think they're going. Because if you're paying, if anyone paying any attention to the economic climate, you know, will predict and could very well see that the tight labor market conditions that we currently sit in might might very well not persist. And I don't want us to make decisions that don't take into account the dynamic market.
When we say six under external affairs, is that also inclusive of the the lobbying folks that we've been talking about?
Marketing, social media.
All right. All right.
Key partnerships.
Bring this back.
I'll bring it back with the full.
That'd be working on some analysis and see what what.
Great. We're going to do a lot with 40 folks.
Yeah.
Be leaning me.
Yeah.
With my team, so.
Yeah. I'm definitely glad to see that the basically feel more comfortable to see Byron's group being added to as well.
That's our, that's our topic. Every day.
Next slide. So this this slide again is a comparative analysis of where we'll end up from a personnel standpoint compared to some of the other community choice aggregators in the industry. And as you can see, we're pretty much in line with CPA, similar size CCA to San Diego Community Power.
It's crazy that they have four people. They stretch from Ventura County to LA, 30, over 30 member agencies and then four people in programs. Interesting. Yeah, I was gonna say, I wonder if they contracted out.
Yeah.
All right. Next slide please.
And can I, sorry, just to add to that, I think that'd be really helpful in your staffing this kind of summary. If you also identify any roles that theoretically could be in source staff, but instead we are currently or are planning to fill with external contracts because or else we're not really getting a full picture of capacity. Like certainly they have some great lawyers.
And this this slide is, shows a scheduling of when we're looking to bring on additional personnel between now and with 19 up to 40. So between July and January, ideally is where we're looking to schedule positions, filling those positions with the staff.
That's aggressive.
Right.
Next slide. It is really aggressive given the market, so. And again, overall, the budget comparison to some of the other CCAs, and again, we we tend to lie closer with Clean Power Alliance with regard to the number of customer accounts that they serve relative to San Diego Community Power. So this slide will look, will probably look a little familiar to most of you in terms of where we stand with revenue and our expenses, a dollar, a dollar to dollar, dollar for dollar comparison to some of the other CCAs.
So now that you have customer accounts, ours is, is that, that's inclusive of National City and the County of San Diego?
Uh, yes.
But then the revenue appears to be just the original members. Is that revenues? That's that's just the original members? That's not inclusive National City?
Yeah, I could talk to that, Chair Moscow. Yeah, the idea, sorry to cut you off, it's the customer accounts are designed to compare us at full growth to other CCAs.
Right.
So that's what we're projected at towards the end of next fiscal year.
Right.
We wanted to show the net revenue just for fiscal year 23, so it's it's all apples and oranges with the chart.
Right.
But yeah, you're right. That's our first figure 23.
Thanks, Tim. Next slide. And this this slide categorically just summarizes the expenses that we presented in a previous slides and how they compare with respect to the percentage that each expense category represents against our net revenue number. And again, landing us at the 13 million dollar net position, which would be contributed to our cumulative net position or our reserves for fiscal year 2023.
So is there a percentage that we aim for when within the industry of community choice energy programs? And I think one of the things we definitely talk about is the fact that we're not the public. You know, we're not the MOUs, we're not the IOUs. And so, which are are very heavy bulky and so, but but we're we're kind of leaner and that's what CCAs are generally. And so is there, is there, you know, obviously energy is the the largest line item. Is there a percentage that when you look from within the industry of where we attend, we want to be in terms of the 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 cost of energy versus, you know, going for personnel or anything else?
I would have to get back to you, Chair Moscow, because the, given the volatility of the energy markets, I think in this environment, it would kind of be hard to really kind of track to where we where we want to be. I think once we hedge more, and Byron can probably speak more to this, once we hedge more, we have better control. I think once we hedge more, and Byron can probably speak more to this, once we hedge more, we have better control over our actual energy costs.
Right.
With hedging and we're not as impacted by the forward curves, the current uh market prices of energy. From that perspective, we would, we would probably be closer to being able to target a percentage of costs, once we have better control of the hedging process.
Yeah, I just, I would love to ask, I had a very similar question. It's this one, but also our very first slide, not very first, but the one where it was a budget pie chart.
Yes.
It looks like, it's very similar, right? Like the breakdown. Um, it doesn't need to be in a board presentation, but I think I would appreciate a memo that, that looked, that, that uh looked at us compared, don't have to do a million, but at least two or three other uh comparators, uh, including um, not just other commute choice energy programs, but really uh looking at, I guess, D G N E, maybe P G N E, how we would compare. I think, I, I think I just don't have situational context.
Yeah, and in terms of how us, how we as a CC in compared to SDG.
I, in terms of the exact question that Joe asked, right, but not just on cost of energy, on sort of all the various budget categories.
Okay.
So this is the budget highlights, and then you had the previous slide, like I said at the beginning, that was the, the pie chart. I think both of those, if we could get them, could compare where we are, so we have contextual awareness of how we stack up compared to others, which I think is really the question Joe's asking. And again, we don't, it doesn't need to be in a board meeting. I think a memo would be fine, but I think it would be useful to, to be able to have that.
And Chair Moscow and uh Director, the previous slide I discussed, does have a percentage of how much of our uh energy and non-energy costs compared to those CCAs, like I'm for spending. So you could see kind of a comparison there, but.
But, yeah, yes, we're asking about non-CCAs.
Yeah, so that, that same, that same format, but compared to an IOU as opposed to other CCAs.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we could, we could certainly, we could certainly uh frame some analysis around that.
It don't take too much time. Very small time.
Noted. Thanks. Next slide. Sorry, did it freeze on us?
It feels like it did. It did.
Okay. Okay, go back one.
This is a good one. Yeah, okay.
So also included in the uh board package is an attachment to the Stafford port for the budget that takes a deeper dive or provides uh more granularity uh to the summaries that were presented um in the slide deck tonight. So please reference that and um you'll find additional information uh in terms of specific items for the budget. Next slide. So that concludes uh my presentation, uh, Jermoska, in recommending a board approval for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Operating budget. Thank you. I'm impressed. I think this is a, it's, it's uh seismically uh better than last year. Thank you. All right, any questions for, um, for our CFO?
Well, a couple of things, we did hear this at Risk and Finance, uh, we did uh make a motion to move this without a recommendation, without prejudice. Uh, Mayor DeDino was there, Greg Moore and I uh decided was appropriate for us to take it, take a vote, uh, but we were clearly very pleased. Uh, both Greg and I had some comments about the presentation. I think we were more of a cash flow kind of analysis at that time. And so we asked uh Dr. Washington if there could be greater context, more of a narrative and more of a package now that we're maturing as an organization. I had, I'm blown away by what you actually produced. I didn't expect much. I thought a few words, a paragraph or a memo or something. Uh, but this really shows the maturing of the organization and showing the budget reflects a three quarters of a billion dollar organization. So that's really terrific. Um, I only had one question, um, and that is, can you go back to the slide that had the five-year outlook?
This.
Yeah. The graphics here on the PowerPoint are, are really fabulous.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate that, Director LaCava, but I have to pause and give credit uh to our finance manager, Tim Mclemmon. He's the, he's the brain trust behind the slide presentation. So thanks for that support.
So sorry. Not only does it look pretty, but it actually is informative and powerful. So somebody who actually knows how to put a slide deck together. I wanted to go back. Now that we actually have goals, now we actually compare what we're saying, what we put. Uh, I just wanted to check the FY twenty-four, which is because we had projected that we would be at ninety days cash on hand by October twenty twenty-three, and that's the FY twenty-four budget. So that's what it shows there. So at least in our projections, we're back to our goals, and that's always a good thing. So I didn't have any other comments. Just terrific job to the entire department.
Any other board member have any comments or questions? No questions. Director Baber?
Nice job, Eric.
Thank you, Director Baber. Again, I have to share that credit with uh Tim Mclemmon, our finance manager. So thanks again, Tim. All right.
Uh, board members.
Yes, I would just uh say I really appreciate the uh brief and uh the work. Thank you.
All right. That was Director McCann, right? Director Bush?
Copy.
No other comments, but I really appreciate staff uh briefing me uh yesterday and, and just presentation. It was, you know, these budgets are uh really complex and um and sometimes uh get really wonky and difficult to read, but I really appreciate the simplicity, the, the visuals and the graphics. So um, yeah, just great job to staff because I know that uh this all, um, you know, it was a lot to, to put together and a lot of work. So, but um, you know, even though there's, um, you know, like, uh, you guys were saying yesterday, the um, the, the ri, rising energy cost, and that's a challenge. But I'm, I'm glad we're in a, it sounds like a good position. So, yeah, I, I support the um approval of the budget and hope everyone else does too.
Thank you, Director Bush. Actually, I just came from a Water Authority meeting earlier where we actually have some uh investments in hydro. So it was the opposite there where we're happy about the increase in energy costs because we're making more. Uh, Megan, do we have any public comment?
There are no hand raised and we did not receive any written comments.
All right, let's bring it back to the board. Um, what's the pleasure?
I'll move the staff work recommendation.
All right, do we have a second to Director LaCava's motion?
Happy to second.
And we have a second.
All right.
Let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Director Bush, how do you vote?
Yes.
Director LaCava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, progress. Two items are very good. Thank you. All right, now to our, the last item and, and definitely not the least uh exciting and uh complex and, and item number eleven, approval of SDG N E modified cost allocation mechanism, MCAM, resource adequacy transaction. And this is Byron Bosberg.
Perfect. Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank everyone. Yeah, with that introduction, yeah, do I need to speak louder? If I can just move up and direct toward. Um, so we do have a, uh, a transaction here for your consideration, um, for a purchase of resource adequacy from SDG N E. That's the easy summary. Um, some of the specifics here, and a, again, this feels like it's half a, a regulatory presentation. So I'm, I'm feeling not having Laura Fernandez, our director regulatory uh here, here with me to help go through all the details. But we, um, anyway, a lot of these are from her slides and, as well. Um, but high level, um, the background, and I'll try to keep it brief, but feel free to slow me down or ask questions as appropriate.
How many slides do you have?
Just two slides.
Two slides, all right. We'll jump in at any time because I know that he, some, sometimes each slide has.
You know, we can make this a dialogue as much, as much I prefer. Um, so there, the, the PUC uh has an integrated resource planning proceeding, um, as a, a number of these, uh, the first of which resulted in a, a procurement obligation uh to, to build, build new resources through resource RA uh or sorry, research adequacy RA contracts um in the period of twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. This was ordered in twenty nineteen before we existed. So we are kind of the, uh, in a bit of a gray area. We don't have an obligation. Um, but we, our customers were at SDG N E when SDG N E received this obligation based on their twenty nineteen load share. Now their, um, their customers have departed to our service. They still have all the RA associated with those contracts, and it makes sense that some of this is allocated out to our customers instead. So just, it's been kind of a couple of years in, in, in the works at the PUC on how costs, on costs and how resources would be allocated. And um so finally have now this cost allocation mechanism, which is called the modified cost allocation mechanism. In, in this decision, uh, which was voted out on, on May nineteenth, the PUC actually said, you know, for those of you who are new entities since twenty nineteen or for CCAs or for LSCs that have expanded uh since that area, we're not going to work it through actually the MCAM mechanism. We're going to give you a one-time opportunity to transact with the IOU that did your procurement. Uh, and you can, uh, you know, have this one-time opportunity to kind of right-size it and, and allocate resources. So we've worked um pretty quickly now with SDG N E um on this transaction to purchase our, our share of those resources. I'll pause there in case there are any questions around kind of the context or the background.
What's the, so if there's a specific allocation or a specific, is there a specific um kind of way that you calculate pure market value under MCAM as opposed to outside of MCAM, or does that even make sense?
Yeah, um, there's similar, there's kind of one PUC definition um for market value for, for RA, both for, for PCI transactions. So they, there is, which is what we're, we're leaning on here is the, and which was prescribed in the decision as well. Obviously, the market price benchmark for RA, there are different benchmarks for system and local and flex RA. We'll pay those as appropriate. Uh, but it's as, as published by the PUC and again, as prescribed in the decision to pay that.
And that's what we're using for whatever resources that we would um contract with uh for the IOU.
That's correct. Yeah, I'll, I'll get into the, if there's no question on the background, I'll, I'll get into the transaction itself. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So the proposed transaction here is to buy our load share of SDG N E's contracted capacity. So their total load share was about almost three hundred megawatts, two hundred and ninety-three megawatts, again phasing in over the twenty-one through twenty-three timeline. Our load share as of twenty twenty-two is thirty-five percent of SDG N E's uh the total area in SDG N E's service. Uh, so the decision stipulates that we'll, we'll buy that load share over the term of, of these, of SDG N E's supply agreements for resource adequacy. So there have been delays. Uh, I'm sure you all have been, been aware of supply chain impacts across just about every industry, but e, especially in energy industry as well. So there have been delays to some of these resources coming online. Um, so this contract is basically a, an as available, as delivered, uh, whatever SDG N E gets from their supply contracts, we get our share of that. Um, it's how it's been, been structured and, and again, kind of follows this out methodology that, you know, um, they don't have any, any obligations to us beyond what they've contracted, passing through, through their share.
But if it's a one-time opportunity and county and national cities coming on next year, and they then boost us up to like, I don't even know what the number, but let's say fifty percent. Why would we calculate based on thirty-five? Can we calculate based on fifty?
It's a great question, Chair. Um, I'll answer briefly. Um, in, in that we proposed both to the PUC and SDG N E to step this up from thirty-five percent to about forty-five percent, which is our number next year. Um, SDG N E pushed back extremely hard and basically said, we'll do it if the PUC tells us to do it. We went to the PUC and the PUC said, well, the decision actually says use your twenty twenty-two load share ratio. Um, so they've kind of interpreted the decision to say it's as of the time of the decision. Um, so we're going to move forward with that per PUC direction. Uh, we may consider a, a additional uh clarification from the PUC down the road. Um, but for now, this is, this has been clarified for us. But it's a great question. Thank you. And then definitely one that's been um a, a point of, point of discussion uh to, to date. Um, so the, the summary currently of what we expect these resources to be is about to get fifty megawatts um from SDG N E's portfolio, starting on September first. Um, assuming we, assuming SDG N E is able to, to come to terms with us and, and sign this and file with the PUC timely. Um, this contract can start as soon as September first this year. Um, so we would have about fifty megawatts of RA through December this year. Um, and then in twenty twenty-three, as additional resources come online, we'd expect about at least seventy-five megawatts of RA. Uh, and then uh up to about a hundred and two megawatts, the maximum uh our share of the two hundred and ninety-three megawatts once all the resources are online and subject to um the, the delays that SDG N E is having in their, their resource development. So that's uh, again, the kind of the high-level summary, uh, the term of this, and then the reason we're here obviously is we have delegated authority to the the CEO for contracts up to three years, just to say a long-term agreement, so requires board approval. Um, this would be through, the term would be through the expiration of SDG N E's upstream contracts. Uh, so that's of, you know, some of them are fifteen years, so some will roll off as their, their ten-year contracts. But those, we will maintain our share of any capacity through twenty thirty-seven, or if they're delayed a year or two in, in being, in starting, then it could even be a, a little longer. Um, as I mentioned, the, the price here is the, the, you know, PUC established market price benchmark for RA. Um, and then these resources are mainly energy storage, um, uh, new, new energy storage resources. Um, I think there's some renewable, uh, hybrid renewable uh with energy storage, and then also I think there's probably, probably one, maybe two, um, natural gas contracts as well.
I like how your voice went off, went.
It was not intentional, but yeah, more end, end of the sentence, I think, but thanks, thanks for calling me on it.
Tara.
Um, yeah, I just had some questions. So, yeah, I, this is very thoughtful, very helpful presentation. Um, what is the price difference that we anticipate between uh what we're going to be able to secure the resource adequacy from, from SDG N E um versus what it's going to cost us to get that other, I guess, fifteen percent that we're going to need to obtain once additional uh load comes on?
It's a really good question. Um, in some ways, I'd say the crystal ball will tell us. Um, prices are really volatile right now, especially in the capacity side, um, because lithium ion prices are, are just bouncing all around. Lithium prices that feed into.
Uh, the battery storage.
Yeah. Um, so uh, energy storage prices, RA prices right now are, are really volatile. Um, long-term contracts that were being priced in the four-dollar range a few months ago are now in eight, eight, nine-dollar range, so almost, almost doubling. Um, so I think the, and so the, the market price benchmark here um allows us to transact at the current market price, which is in some ways beneficial in that we're not paying out above market, right, going forward. But at the same time, to your, to your point, if we were able to uh sign a fixed price contract now, that would reduce our, it would reduce our risk. We wouldn't be subject to mark, floating market prices in, in the future. Um, so I think uh ballpark, I, I think that we probably could contract for long-term RA around the current market price benchmark. Um, but I, it's tough to say where RA price will go in the future.
I, I just really want to better understand this because it's SDG N E is so resistant to selling this RA at whatever the current benchmark prices. I feel like they gotta know something. They bad, they must be predicting that the future cost for RA is going to exceed the current cost, or else why would they be resisting? They might, if they thought it was going to be lower, they'd be trying to offload it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I've uh given up speculating around SDG N E's in, in intent and, and analysis. Um, it's been quite a, uh, it, it's been a confusing, I'll say, negotiation on, on this. Um, it seems they're, they're very tied to their RA, and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure whether it's analysis-driven or just, you know, kind of more principally driven. I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure. Um, I think, um, and there were, and yeah, I, I'm not sure. The, the implication to our customers, I will say that if the, we are protected in some ways because this is PCIA eligible. These are from PCI resources. So if the market price that we pay ends up being above or below their contract price for these resources, then that's trued up to us through the PCI. So it's kind of a.
Explain it.
Yeah, oh boy, how much, how much, how much time do we have?
This is going to get into the, the question that kind of uh got into this earlier. Uh, oh no, that was Tara, but it was, but it was similar.
Yeah, so the um, making up, I guess, round, round numbers, um, say, and I, I don't, I have no information in SDG's supply portfolio, obviously. Um, say they paid five dollars per kilowatt month for this RA, then the market price, the short-term market price benchmark is seven dollars. We'd be paying them seven dollars for something they paid five dollars for. That two-dollar being net credit would then go into the all, all accounted for correctly, would go into the PCA portfolio and then reduce our, our PCI costs and implications to our customers. Flip side, if we, if, uh, I guess, yeah, i, if their contracts are higher and market price drops below, then, you know, that the same five-dollar price that they paid over the long term, if market price drops to four, then we're, we're paying four. It looks great on our, on our budget and our power supply costs, but then there's an additional dollar that's been made up to our, our customers. So we're.
And we pay to our customers.
So our customers would pay the, the balance. So as, as you follow the, the money all the way through, the customers are paying the net cost that SDG N E contracted, as long as everything, all the dollars flow correctly. Um, it, the market price just kind of gives us an, I guess, an intermediate benchmark to point to, um, for us to settle. And then the PCI the next year is kind of trued up to, to bounce it all out.
So the PCA is meant to ensure that the customer is paying the true, uh, the true supply cost.
That's correct.
And not the market supply cost, and although we play the market supply cost. And not the market supply cost, and although we play the market supply cost, why don't we just pay the true supply costs?
We had proposed that, you guys are asking a lot of, a lot of triggering questions, sorry. And it's reaffirming, I think, to hear some questions here that we proposed previously that that did, were not accepted. There was a long stakeholder process, I think, two years ago, around this modified CAM process. S D G N E, even at that time, proposed that we pay the contract price instead of the the market price benchmark. As the proposed decision came out, it said, pay the market price benchmark. We commented, say, actually, we think the contract price would be better, even S D G N E said it before, can we use that instead? And the P U C still decided that we should use the market price benchmark. So that's.
Okay, so it's not, that's not S D G, that's regulatory.
Yeah.
Okay. But you're, we basically have no way of assessing currently whether our costs or our resource adequacy are going to be higher or lower than this, than what we're currently being asked to pay.
Correct, and and I'd like to say we can, we can beat the market every year, and frequently, we may be able to, but but can't, you know, can't say with certainty, obviously. The, the benefit here is that this will float with market prices, so if market prices do drop in the future, then we're, we're not out of the money. As I said, flip side, obviously, we're, we're not hedging our costs against rising RA.
Do you know the true cost that they paid, the the supply, the procurement supply cost?
I, I don't.
So we only know the market cost, so we actually have no visibility into what, how this is going to impact our consumers.
That, that's correct.
So, okay.
It's also the practicality of having resources come online at a certain time, if they have those resources, it it may be harder for us to kind of go out and get those resources, because they're not available.
You're correct, certainly, you know, on the 21 through 2023 timeframe, yeah, with our rollout being in 2122.
But I I just, I think all of this suggests to me that we, it's actually fine, in my view, that we're only able to buy 35%, because that's, I think, that is sufficient to get us through the next few years where we don't have a long enough runway to to meet those resource adequacy requirements in cases of blackouts, et cetera. But it doesn't lock us in, that it still gives us some sort of flexibility to buy energy at a rate that's actually what we know it costs, instead of some invisible black box.
Agreed, I think this is, and this is only, to clarify, this is only a, you know, a share of their kind of 300 megawatt obligation, right, not their whole portfolio, which, which is gigawatts. So this is, this is, yeah, certainly, you know, helps us achieve our objectives and it's kind of is a nice foundation in our portfolio to build upon, but we've got plenty of work to do as well, plenty more room for us.
But I also, I I even just meant that, like, to to Chair, Chair Moscow's question around why not 50%, that it seems to me that that's okay, that we can't, we're not able to buy all of their resource adequacy requirements that would be necessary for our projected consumer base starting next year, because that gives us a little bit more flexibility to meet that need in a way that actually works.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you for all the questions that were difficult.
Happy to, not yet, yeah, bring.
I mean, if if we can meet the need in a way that's more consistent with our values and and the type of content that we want, then that would be great, but having access to theirs would also be be awesome too, even though it may not necessarily be the type of, the type of power that we want, right?
Right, yeah, we we had no choice in it, but our customers paying for it either way.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, Billy, on that, can you talk a little bit about, you you generally described their portfolio? What of that we will be buying? I think we don't have a choice, right?
Right, I I have yet to see their updated resource list, they've been working to assemble it for us. The one we saw was almost, almost all energy storage facilities, I believe there was one natural gas contract as well. I've seen recently a, another advice letter of theirs that requested adding resources to this modified CAM portfolio. That I think was RA from a hybrid facility, and then another energy battery storage facility as well, but we haven't seen the final list. I'm happy, be happy to circulate that to you all, once this treatment proceeds.
And making assumptions, the ramp-up seems to be slow enough that it doesn't really affect the budget that we just approved in the five-year projections.
Yeah.
Thanks for confirming.
Any other questions? Anybody online?
There are no hand raised at this time, and no written comments.
Is there any member of the public that likes, would like to comment on this item?
S D G N E dot com?
No hand raised.
All right, all right, well, we'll take it back to the board, and you're looking for a motion to approve this, correct?
Yes, please.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the staff's recommendation? So I'll move it. All right.
That was a motion by McCann, a second by Baber.
Thank you for stating that, Director Baber, all right, let's, let's vote.
All right, Director Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Bush, how do you vote? Director LaCava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, so we are now at the end of our agenda, and we have reports by management and general councils, we'll start with the CEO.
I have a short management update, a couple of items. First, members of the staff, board and CAC, celebrated together as a bronze sponsor at the San Diego Equality Awards. And our vice chair and community council member Steve Padilla was also a co-sponsor and speaker at the event. We, this is the first item, we have selected a recruitment firm to help us with hiring, and we are in contracting process with them. We also now have our HR consulting partner, Ignite Solutions, onboard, they're a women-owned small business, and they started the process of building out our HR, safety, benefits, hiring and performance review processes for their first 90 days. Now that we have adopted our high-level organizational goals for each of our core focus areas, we're going to be working on our SMART goals. SMART goals are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. So these goals will guide our work plans, our internal work plans going forward into the coming year, as well as all of our staff activities, so they will guide what we do, when we do it, and how we measure our individual and team performance. Another update we had is at last month's meeting, the Director of Programs, Colin Santulli, gave an update on the Community Power Plan or the CPP. As mentioned, in addition to the broad engagement that we're doing with community-based organizations, the public, other stakeholders, in order to understand their key issues and priorities, we also want to hear specifically from the board about your goals and priorities that will inform the CPP. So please keep an eye out for an email from staff, and they'll be offering three options for board members to attend a small group session in late July or early August. And then for those who can't make a small group session or just prefer one-on-one, they're happy to schedule those as well. So you'll see that coming through to your emails shortly, and so please sign up. And that's what we have on the management report.
Excellent, all right.
Thank you.
General Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our report.
All right, Director comments, anybody on the phone, Director comments, Mr. Baber? Any director? All right, doesn't look like there are any director comments. My only comment is, have a nice summer. Actually, the the city of Encinitas is dark for the month of July, so this is quite literally my summer recess now. So next week starts my summer vacation with my kids, and I can't wait, so you guys have a nice July, and I'll see you, or nice rest of the time, and I'll see you at our board meeting in July. All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jonathan.